Starting with Coen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just some of the highlights of the information contained in the report. We had total calls from the code department of 886. We were still doing code inspections back in March, which is the timeframe this covers. We had 35 of those. We had 137 business licenses and alcohol license renewals in that month. We've gone down. Contacts of businesses who had submitted their paperwork came out of their business licenses and actually were down to around 30 this year, which we have a record at this point, so I'm happy about that. City marshal patrolled the city daily, removed signs on the roadway. He served 25 summons to appear in court in advocacy, tearing down the building's [inaudible]. There's more there. If you have any questions about it on the back end.
Any questions back there? Thank you very much. Let's move on.
Thank you, Mayor. We flew almost 12 and a half million kilowatt hours. It cost $1.1 million. Top user was at 961 gig, 126 above 200 gig. The peak's still hovering around 900 meg. And we're still shopping around for bandwidth. We haven't found the price point we want yet. We haven't had any lights from customers. Still a little bit behind, so we are hoping that we find that correct price point. We started tree training for 2014. They started on Amish Bridge. As you will see them from Amish Bridge, they're going to Highland and probably to Church Street. And we'll just see how far we get once we go from that point, just to stay within the budget. We launched the Abaya phone system after a long battle with Windstream. It is pretty much full functioning now, and I'm happy with it. I don't know about the rest of the [inaudible] right now. We'll see. It is making it easier for my department to communicate with each other, and our foremen now all have phones, so we can get communication between them and our customers a little easier. And we rebuilt from the windstorm. Every time we seemed to get a little bit ahead, something kicks us back, and that was a... Crews did a great job. Everybody worked great together again. And we got, I think our longest outage was about 14, 15 hours, and that was in the Daniel Street area, right in front of the Baptist Church. That was most heavily damaged. We had other heavy damage off of Amish Bridge. We got that back up, and then more heavy damage off of Highland. That's also why those two streets are getting the attention they deserve for the tree training. We don't have our issued track report on here this month. We're changing it up a little bit, and I haven't got it exactly like I want, so as soon as that, we'll have that back on there next month. Any questions you have?
Thank you, Brian. Thank you. Finance Department.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few of the performance indicators to point out. Our clinic utilization's still up. We're meeting with some of the providers, and we'll do a little bit more on that during the finance committee meeting section. The tax sale will be in June. Our son is working hard on that, and we usually take anything that's got two years of back taxes, so we'll plan to have a sale in June. And then it looks like their squashed and lost monies edging up a little bit, so hopefully we'll see a better trend in that, so just kind of keep our fingers crossed and hope that that continues to go up. And then just wanted to let you know that Ms. Broughton's doing an excellent job. She got out here during the storm and walked the streets, took pictures, and tried to keep community informed, social media, best we could as to, you know, what was going on and some of the progress. And we are looking forward to the phone system being in, and just this weekend is when we're getting full information. And our other report, March data is here. Looks like most of the departments are pretty much on budget in the general fund. There are a couple that are up just a little bit, but I've been looking at that. Most of that is due to the general liability insurance payment that's paid in one lump sum, so that was paid, and might have caused a couple of them to look like they're a little bit over budget, but, you know, reality they're not. In the utilities, I just will point out that gas in the revenue and the expense side looks like it's over budget, but part of that's due to we use M.G.A.S. budgeting, what they recommend, and they're very, very conservative on that. And coupled with that, and then the really cold weather caused the revenue to be higher than expected, but it also caused the cost of that to be high, too. So if you look at that, that's the explanation there. I spoke with Mr. Middlebrooks this afternoon, and I think the expectation probably is that that's going to drop way down in the next five, six, maybe even seven months, since we're already getting in some really warm weather. So that should level out a little bit, so... And then if there's anything else, we'll take any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Renee. Move into Fire Department.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Fire Department had 154 calls for service this month, or in the months of March. Had 225 calls to the Fire Department. As you see, the show of the same trend that the man assist or those first responders assist to medical emergencies are our largest call volume. And planning and talking that we do in the Fire Department, we talk about that and how we need to prepare for that, because we do, and it's nationwide, this is a trend nationwide. Fires are down, you know, across the nation, but the man assist calls are kind of more and more prominent in fire services. And the value of that is if they arrive three, four minutes, sometimes it could be 10 minutes before an ambulance can get to you. And they have the, basically, we have EMT trained people and some paramedic trained people. You've got that medical assistance to you before the ambulance can get there, so any and any questions on fire?
I'd just like publicly make a comment about the Fire Department, that a week ago, today, a house next door to me was hit by lightning and a fire started, and the, according to the owner, from the time of nine one one call was placed and the time the Fire Department showed up, it was less than two minutes. And they were able to contain the fire with no structural damage because of a two-minute response, so I'd just like the public to thank the people at the Fire Department.
Pass that on to the crew. They were on duty that night. They did a good job, did a good job with the whole situation. We've had a lot of those kind of situations this year, it seems, as well. But thank you, Mr. Brown.
I think I'm moving Police Department.
PD had 45, 124 calls for service, 1,444 calls to PD, 307 court cases conducted by 126 hours of training. Had 130 adult arrests and three juvenile arrests. You got the whole package. Any and any questions?
All right. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Moving to solid waste now.
Thank you, Mayor. The stats on solid waste, it has a slight trend outward on the limb pickup and the regular collection of solid waste, mainly because of the warmer weather seems to trend that way when you get hot. I just want to add, too, with the limb pickup, we're going to be working overtime to try to get ready for [inaudible]. We will be dealing with trying to clean up our lives, a lot of yard debris. We're a little bit off schedule, but we'll be working overtime to get that cleared up. Also, I just got some stats on the Great American Cleaner. Anticipation wasn't that great. We did collect over a ton of garbage pickup. It had eight tires, and we collected 23 gallons of paint. Any other questions? Here for us.
Thank you, Dan. Streets and transportation.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just highlight a few areas of the report you have. We rented out the community building 12 times during the month of March, which is double what we've had in the past several months. A lot of activity is going on over there. Our grounds crew picked up 820 pounds of litter throughout the city. Our street division performed street repairs on four streets and paved 14 utility cuts. And I'll explain a little bit of those utility cuts. We have several of those throughout the city. In order for us to use our time and materials-wise, we typically like to have at least 10 to do, and then we'll go in and get a load of asphalt, two loads of asphalt, and do a bunch of those at one time. So if you see, if you notice the reports where one month they may not have made but a couple of those done, and the next month there may be 20 of those done, that's why we do that, to be able... It's hard to go get one or two tons of asphalt. You have to go get 18 to 20 for that. Solid marking divisions and our buildmates division continues to work off of four boards complete, knows as they come in, and they're doing a great job. Our department, along with solid waste, is steadily trying to get the debris up through the town from the storm. With street sweeper, we've attached the claw to the front of the grayed oak. We're running throughout the town assisting in it. I'm going to estimate a couple of weeks out of having, you know, all of them bred up, which I think is pretty good considering the amount of damage and trees that we have down throughout the city. An update on our Richard Parsons extension out of the airport. We're about halfway through with the infrastructure there. Tomorrow should be a pretty solid day as far as getting halfway through with the grading and putting down some rock and stuff there, so we're going to be a couple of weeks out from there. We're going to be ready to put some asphalt down out there. Other than that, I'll be glad to take any questions regarding streets and transportation.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. Water, sewer, and gas and stormwater.
Thanks, Mayor. As far as water, sewer, and gas goes and stormwater, if you look at the number, they're pretty much aligned with the past several months. You know, the pipe insulation of gas is up 69 feet. Majority of that's going to be the Highway 78 line we put in to disconnect from the social circle line. If you drop down to the very bottom, we've got, as far as stormwater goes, such as current stuff, the detention [inaudible] inspections have been completed, and we filled out compliance letters. At Goode, we also recently had two employees that received certifications to teach joint DOT flagging certifications. And an update on 2011, CDBG, the destruction has ended, and the follow-up inspection's been completed, so rallied everything up on that one. In the 2013, CDBG survey has started, so we can get started on that pretty soon. And then on natural gas, we've started swapping the services over along 138 from Walmart, Chick-fil-A, Bank of America, some of those businesses down through there. We've started swapping those over to IRLI. Should have that completed by the end of this month. So if you've got any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Can you, or Brian, one comment on just Charlotte Rival Boulevard and where, you know, what's going on with it, if anything?
I can give you the latest I know. There are two points of contention on the project. One is an ongoing deal. It's the location of one of the traffic lights where 78's are turning to 138. There's an argument, the last I saw, between the contractor and the DOT about it was placed in the wrong place and who's going to pay to move it. And then there is a problem with the guardrail contractor. I don't know whether he actually placed the wrong kind of guardrail or put the guardrail in the wrong place, but they're having that argument, too. I haven't seen a lot of people out there lately.
There's nothing on our end.
Nothing going on, I know.
Nothing on the city's end.
No, nothing that we can do. We have, the only thing that we need to do to open that road was to get that power line over there to the intersection. That's been there for three and a half, four months, maybe five months. We had it there the day they said they needed it, and they had an actual [inaudible]. The only thing we can do to the DOT gets done with their contractor.
I just had people ask, and I just wanted to know what your opinion was, when it may open.
I've made too many guessings on that.
We've got one more thing I want to add, too. We'll start flushing our water system Monday. The ads can place in the paper. It'll also be updated on our website every day. Fire Department's going to notify us what streets they'll be on, so we're kind of the public aware of what streets, so we'll be flushed that day. So beginning calls, brown water, dirty water, just reminding the flusher stick it for five, 10 minutes if you couldn't clear them.
Go over that again, what people might expect to see and what they need to do.
Usually when you flush your system, you'll get a little bit of a [inaudible] stirred up in the system. Basically, all you do is go open up a sink, five, 10 minutes, you then put it right up. So that's all that needs to be done.
Okay. Any more questions? If not, we'll move into the committee information, starting with finance.
Thank you, Mayor. First item on the agenda for this evening is fiscal year 2013 audit financial statements. And I'll turn it over to Alan Frayley from Maulin Jenkins, our auditing firm.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here this evening. I am Adam Fray with Maulin Jenkins. I'm here to present the audit for the fiscal year ended December 31st, 2013. You should have this good-looking CAFER, the Conference of Annual Financial Report, and also what we call our annual audit agenda. I should have both of these documents. I'm going to go through the audit agenda, which kind of summarizes the results of the audit, and if you have any questions, as I go through, please feel free to interject, and I'll try to answer those questions for you. Before I start out, I just want to say, you know, I'm going to present to you real good results tonight. I mean, the audit went really well. You know, we're super appreciative. The finance department did a real good job, as usual, but, you know, I feel like this year was even better than last. It, you know, it just kind of keeps getting better, so you're going to see in here the results are very good for the audit. Starting on page one there, you know, it talks a little bit about Maulin Jenkins. It talks about our governmental sector of our firm, which is the largest niche in our firm, making up about 25% of our firm's overall practice. We serve over 250 governments in the southeast, mostly in the state of Georgia, and over 65,000 hours of service to those clients. On page two there, more about Maulin Jenkins. This just talks about some of the other industries that we serve, also talks about some of the other services that we provide, so, you know, feel free to look at those and just, again, just some information on Maulin Jenkins. On page four, this is kind of in a nutshell what we did and the results of what we did. You know, of course, I refer to it as the CAFER. The CAFER is the responsibility of the city. The finance department puts this together annually. Our responsibility is to render an opinion on those financial statements based on our audit test work, and we did render an opinion. We rendered, it's often called a clean opinion, as I like to refer to it, which means it's an unmodified opinion. It used to be unqualified, now it's unmodified, and so they kind of changed terminology on us, but what that means is that it's not modified. It's not qualified or any of sort like that. So what that means is that we believe the financial statements for the year ended December 31st, 2013 are fairly stated in all material respects. On page five, I keep referring to this CAFER, and it goes on to page six also, but I keep referring to this CAFER. The CAFER is not required in the state of Georgia. It's something that the city does and annually submits that CAFER to the Government Finance Officers Association, and, you know, in state of Georgia, you're required to have annual audited financial statements. All the information that goes into a CAFER being the introductory section, the statistical section in the back, which is volumes of information, a lot of good information going back 10 years. It's not required. The city does this, and they submit this to the GFOA for their consideration in their certificate in excellence for financial reporting. The city has been able to obtain that in past years. Last year's got that award, so, you know, that's very good. I mean, it's not many cities in the state of Georgia do a CAFER or seek that award and get that. And so, you know, that's a testament of also how good your finance department does here with the finances. I know that it's been submitted this year as well for consideration in that award program again, and, you know, I don't think there'll be any problem getting it again, so that's page five and six. I'm going to turn over to page eight now. This goes into a little bit of the financial results of the year, the general fund, which is obviously the main operating fund, if you will, of the city. The general fund's revenues were about $8 million this year, a little bit higher than last year. Last year was about 7.7 million, while expenditures were about 8.4 million rounded compared to 9.4 million last year, so you can see some cost savings there. What that did is that was able to add to the bottom line or to fund balance for the general fund by about $782,000. Ending fund balance for the general fund was about 2.5 million. You can also look in these graphs here, and you can see on the graph on page nine there the difference between revenues and expenditures contributing to that increase in fund balance. Let's see. On page nine, this kind of talks about, I'm sorry, on page 10, this talks about the city as a whole. Obviously, the city's broken down. It's got, you've got your general, you've got your governmental funds, which mostly made up of your general fund, and you've got your proprietary funds, which is utilities and the solid waste. You can see here the governmental activities, which is all those governmental funds. It's net position, which is a change in terminology. It's the equity, increase from 17.7 million to 18.9 million, while the business type activities net position increased from about 60 million to about 63 million. You know, of course, the city, a lot of their net position is tied up in infrastructure, whether it be in the utilities or, you know, that infrastructure, or whether it be, you know, the governmental stuff, and it's the roads and, you know, streets and bridges and so forth. What that leaves in the governmental activities and business-type activities of this 18 million and 62 million, it leaves only about 2.2 million in the governmental activities and only about 1.4 million in the business-type activities that is the unrestricted net position, that equity, if you will. And that's the amount that's kind of available for future spending. It's not tied up in the infrastructure and capital assets, or isn't restricted for some other purpose like debt service or what have you. So that's kind of how the finances look at the year ended December 31st, 2013. The next couple pages is a Cliff Notes version of the footnotes that are in the CAFER, so you can refer back here as you're looking through those and see what those are telling the reader. Turning over to page 13, goes into some of our required communications. Nothing really to note here, and it goes for several pages. You know, really, you know, just to say again, you know, how cooperative management was. You know, it talks about things near any significant difficulties we encountered or any disagreements with management. We had none. They were completely cooperative, you know, and we, you know, we find that, you know, finance here understands governmental accounting, which is unique for, you know, than other type businesses, and does a good job with it. We did have some audit adjustments. They've been posted to the records and the general ledger system of the city, and they also have been recorded in these financial statements to make sure that they are materially Over to page 16 here. We did have one finding this year, and really, it was just kind of a goof situation when you're dealing with as many dollars and as many transactions that Monroe deals with. You know, sometimes something get missed, and here is where, and correct me if I'm wrong, Renee, but we recorded a receivable revenue in the prior year, so 2012, but then when, obviously, you collect that receivable in 2013, it got recorded again as revenue rather than offsetting that receivable. So a double counting thing there that was kind of an oops. It was caught during the audit process, you know, and resulted in a finding there. We didn't have any other findings. We didn't have any other management recommendations that we saw. The great thing there is that, you know, we've worked with the city in the past and things that we've suggested in past years, they obviously have taken to heart, and y'all have made the necessary corrective measures to maybe strengthen those internal controls or fix those processes. So that's really, you know, all I have to report there, you know, an awesome year, so I'm glad to that. And starting on page 17, it starts going to some of the new accounting standards that are coming out. This is the real fun reading, so y'all be sure to look through this in your time. But I did want to point out one of the new accounting standards coming out, and I may have pointed this out last year, but it's kind of a big one. On page 20, GASB's the standard-setting body for local governments. This is GASB statement number 68. You'll see at the top of the page, and it has to do with accounting and reporting for pension plans. The city, if you don't mind turning with me, in the CAFER as well, to page 51. The city obviously has a defined benefit plan. This is the mechanism used to fund pension benefits for employees of the city when they At July 1 of 13, which is the last actuarial evaluation that the city received, you've got the actual value of assets there of 13.5 million. What that means is that's the assets that have been set aside to pay for future benefits. The actual accrued liability, as determined by the actuary, was 19.4 million. The difference there of the 5.8 million is what they call the unfunded actual accrued liability. Many assets have not been set aside for that projected obligation. The new GASB 68, what that's going to require is this 5.8 million essentially to come onto the balance sheet of the city. And so it's going to change the way, you know, the overall balance sheet, the numbers I'm talking to you about tonight, it's going to come on as a new liability. We'll see that the city has to adopt that for December, for the 2015 year. And, you know, just to make you aware there, you know, a lot of folks obviously aren't changing their funding of this. It's just a different reporting thing, you know, kind of like, you know, some cities have OPEB, which is the other post-employment benefits other than pension. Well, you know, a few years ago, they made you start putting a liability on for that. Didn't really change. Everybody still pays healthcare costs, for example, on a pay-as-you-go basis, still paying the bills as they come due, but GASB is wanting you, in a full accrual environment, to go ahead and record that liability because the employees are earning it now, so they're wanting to go ahead and record that. So just a heads up there that that will change. The disclosures will change a little bit, too, but the big thing is that number coming onto the balance sheet as a liability.
So Adam, if you just clarify that one more time.
Okay.
It changes the equity we have in effect.
It will reduce the equity.
Reduce the equity, but it does not affect cash flow.
That's right. That's right. Your, the funding decisions, which is y'all's decision, I know, you know, GMA, you know, send invoices, and the actuary determines the required contribution for the year, and they split it by 12, and they bill you for that, and you pay them every month. That's the cash flow.
And that doesn't change?
That doesn't change. Now, the only thing I will say could change about that is the actuaries with this new standard also, they're, you know, they use assumptions, you know, inflation rates, you know, you know, investment rate of returns, this kind of stuff. They've got a, they have, they're going to have to be more uniform. They, I mean, all the actuaries are going to have to be more uniform going forward because this new standard is going to make them all adopt these certain assumptions. And things like investment rate of returns, they're going to make you kind of have, I mean, they have to kind of prove it to the auditors a little bit. They can't just use the old seven and a half percent that's kind of the pie in the sky kind of thing. They have to prove it a little bit more. So it's going to cause things, and actually, that unfunded liability, 5.8 million, is probably going to be bigger. probably gonna be bigger. When they change the assumptions the way they need to or to comply with the standard, in most cases, it's probably gonna increase that number some. Again, it doesn't change cash flow. You know, they're gonna still determine what is your annual required contribution, and they're gonna split that by 12 and give it to you. So it's not you have to fund it now, but you do have to report it now in accordance with accounting standards.
Do you know what the required percentage of funding is?
The required percentage, like...
When they're making the computation and sending the bill for the new year, the minimum required funding percentage?
Well, if you look at, let's see. If you look at page 45, down at the bottom of page 45, you'll see, one thing they calculate is the actuary determine contribution rate as a percentage of covered payroll. And you'll see right in the middle of bottom of 45 there, it was 15% of covered payroll.
Well, I mean, I just noticed that the funding had dropped, you know, from year to year, and I would assume that they had a minimum and would adjust the billing to make sure there was a minimum amount of funding.
Well, and I don't know it offhand, but I know the state of Georgia has a minimum funding by law as well, and GMA, you know, has got to comply with that and at least be at that. But, you know, and you'll see, you'll see the three-year history over on page 46 of the annual pension cost requirements. And of course, y'all have paid those. Like I said, they split it by 12, and they bill you monthly, and y'all paid each one of those bills. And so, you'll see, you know, it was 1.1, 1.2, and almost 1.4 over the past three years of what is what they've required, if you will, that y'all paid.
I'm looking to see if I have anything. I do know that GMA has told us that their amount for funding is higher than what the state's minimum, state standard is, so, you know, we're by no means down to that level.
Right. That is typically the case with GMA. But I'm trying to look here. Yeah. So, and that concludes my presentation. If you've got any other questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
One thing on a total financial position in relation to the 1,338 unrestricted fund balance, if I understand this correctly, I wanted everybody else to know too that we have, that does not count our capital improvements projects fund, which is about 12 million, which is where most of our capital improvements are coming from these days. Well, if you look on page six, you can see it at the bottom. You had mentioned that we had, and we do have unrestricted capital fund balance.
And the 1.3 million is in the business-type activities.
Right, yeah, and that's what I was talking about, but you can see the balance there too that's restricted is mostly in the CIP. Some of it's in the bond, I know, but I think about eight of it sends the CIP, which is where we're funding most of our capital projects fund.
Yeah, I mean, most of, I mean, that's right. 12.6 million of the 62 million in net position for just that utilities fund, 12.6 million of it is restricted with capital projects. That's right. And about 200,000 for debt service.
Yeah. When you're talking about having to make capital improvements, it's better to know that and understand it than to think you're only having to work with a surplus of 1,300,000. Yeah.
But with that said, we want that 1,300,000 or need that 1,300,000 to be higher if we can, because that's our operating money, day-to-day operating money, and really does need to be.
It's the operating money, and to me, it makes a much better financial position to have it higher.
Anything else? Okay. Well, thank you for having me here this evening.
Thanks for being here, I appreciate it. Next item on the finance agenda this evening is 2015 Bravo Plan Design. Who's gonna think it?
I'll start out, and then Mr. Chance can add anything to it. We met with the Bravo staff, and they gave us their annual report and recommendations, and just went over how we had improved in some areas and maybe not quite so much in some other areas, and some of their suggestions for the upcoming year. And what they'd like to see is for us to, and we had discussed this last year, bring the spouses up to the same testing level as the employees now that they've been given a year, so when they're tested next year, they'll have to be at that same level. And then they would also like to see the change, us to change the BMI from 29.9 to a 29, just edge it down just a little bit, but with a reasonable alternative of 5% instead of 10%, which they felt like was more easily attainable for somebody to bring that down by 5% rather than 10, that might be a little bit more encouraging for somebody that needs to bring their BMI down to get to that standard. So those are the recommendations for Bravo.
So do we know from last year's testing, if the BMI had been 29 instead of 29.9, how many people would have been affected by that?
They looked at it, and it was a slight bit higher, of course, percentage, but they felt like that if we don't do some of that, some of the blood pressure and other diabetes and some of the other things tend to not go back, which is sort of status quo. That the BMI really triggers the health of those areas is what.
Ms. Bryth and I have had this discussion, yeah.
Well, and they do give the reasonable alternatives and a chance for you to appeal. I think there were a good many appeals. I did not ask how many, and they were branded, and I think that you prove that you're exercising there's a reason that maybe you balked, you balked more than what the BMI would allow, but they will take that into consideration. Oh, yeah, they'll need, they need to know those guidelines, because they'll start putting the plan in place, so that we'll start testing, and however, we have to start in the summertime to get all that lined up.
Okay, we will need a motion from the committee then to adopt Bravo Plan Design for 2015. This is Professor Olson.
I'm looking to adopt that.
Have a motion, have a second. I'll second. Motion second, all in favor, aye? Aye, opposed? We'll pass that on to the full council next week. The last item on the finance agenda this evening is a clinic RFQ.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Agcock. As you know, we sent out an RFQ for clinic services, our current provider, CareHere. This should be the third year that we've had them. However, we did receive roughly seven or eight RFQs, and we have interviewed three. Still in the process of getting some questions answered. One of the, one of the three, or of the three, zero is not CareHere, so we will be making the transition away from CareHere. One of the things we're looking at though is keeping a seamless transition with our staff. We feel like we found a great mix of a doctor, a PA, and a nurse, and utilization has been up every week, just roughly 10%, so we're also looking at adding an additional half a day to the week, so that's good. It means we're doing what we need to do as far as encouraging our employees to utilize that clinic. So there's no recommendation this evening on a provider yet. I'm still working with our TPA Jim from Covenant Administrators, and we're gonna have some conversation with CareHere for that seamless transition. Hopefully, come with a recommendation next week. If not, we may have to push it out in June, but it is our goal to come next week.
And that's a good doctor we have.
It is, and you know, we've gone through about two or three over the past, I guess, two years, and he seems to fit our employees, and he, you know, takes good care of them. And as you can tell from the utilization, 110% on average every week, so that's good. That's all. If anybody has any questions, I can answer that about the clinic.
Thank you, sir. That concludes finance agenda this evening.
Okay, thank you. Airport have anything?
No, Ms. Mayor.
Public Works?
Yes, Mayor, we have one item. It's an update on the recycling request for quote, and Denise is gonna take care of that.
Okay, thank you, Denise. We only have one bid come in for recycling services, and we're in the process of reviewing it, and addressing any questions we might have, we can bring back to council and make a decision next week.
Yeah, just to add to that, Ms. Dixon, we are looking at, like Mr. Smith said, the one bid that did come across or that was submitted. We're also gonna look, there had been some interest in us looking at implementing a recycling program which would basically incentivize citizens to recycle. And as we've said in past meetings, I mean, the more we recycle, the more it takes out of our transfer stations, so our costs lower, and plus, it's just the right thing to do, I guess. But we are gonna be discussing that this week, and we may come again before you recommending this vendor that bid on recycling services, or we may not. We're still crunching the numbers and seeing if it would in fact lower our costs.
Were you surprised that only one company did?
You know, I was until I got to asking why, and they said basically, the recycle, the people that take the recycling items, most of these haulers now are having to pay people to take the items. So instead of getting paid for the items you're trying to drop off, you're having to pay. That's the answer I got, so.
So as a culture, we're moving away from recycling?
That's kinda what it sounded like, but, I guess that's definitely unfortunate, but...
This incentive program, it'll be something separate?
It would, it would be something that we could work with whoever the vendor may be, and just off the top of my head, if you go into a neighborhood and implement a program, have a neighborhood competition, you know, the house that recycles the most may get a gift card of some sort. I mean, there are, there are all different types of programs you can implement, and that's something that we wanna talk to this one vendor about, is what can they do, what can they provide, what options do they have for such a program?
Good. That's all, Mayor.
Okay. Utilities.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Millbrook, this is first item.
Thank you, Mr. Low. I'm asking to purchase 25 fire hydrants so we can begin our replacement of the ORD wood hydrants in our system. There's a new requirement for the ISO that's mandating the four-and-a-half-inch steezer connections from, those are some of the newer, I say newer, last 20 years, they have one big novel that's got the two small ones on the side. With RD woods, only has the two, two-and-a-half inches over each side, that's it. So we're, once again, changing these out, the newer four-and-a-half-inch connections for the fire department. So we're asking about, go ahead and purchase the 25, low bid was consolidated, pipe supply at $53,550.
Any questions?
Is this item a counterbody?
Rodney, can you explain a little bit about the ISO rating and how that's gonna be negatively affected if we don't?
Chief Glass may be able to speak more than I can, but what I understand, we actually get deductions for those type hydrants, and like I said, he may be able to speak more to it than I can.
Everything on the ISO is a point system, and you get points for the lathe, points for, you know, you gotta have a standby pumper, even though you got two there. And everything we can do to get that point, keep it, you know, the city of Monroe has very, very few, I won't say it's less than 30 cities, have a rating that we have, so it's something we wanna focus on trying to keep there. There's very few cities that have, and this is another way to help us get those points when they do come visit.
Which helps keeps everybody's insurance rates as low as possible.
Insurance down.
So Rodney, you mentioned over the last 20 years, so you're saying all of these hydrants are more than 20 years old?
Oh, yes, yeah. We've been using Mueller hydrants for probably since the 70s or 80s, and we stuck with that one brand. These RD woods are gonna be back in the 20s and 30s, and they're really old.
So if we do these?
I've actually got 25 in this year, 25, actually, I think I've got 25 each year for the next five years.
And that's to get them all over a five-year period?
I make a motion, it's be approved, or sent to the council for approval.
There's a motion to approve the purchase of 25 hydrants, and would you state the price again, Rodney? Rodney, would you state that price again?
It's $53,550.
Second. There's a motion in this second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We'll recommend that to council. Mr. Thompson, vocal contract.
Yes, sir. I've been with you over the past couple of weeks about this, it's been coming up. Mayor, anytime you want to speak in from MEAC side, you do. MEAC is negotiating with the federal government for loan, basically bonds, or a lower interest rate than we can get anywhere else to finance the last quarter of the plant vocal expansion. They expected to have these negotiations done last week, Mayor?
Yeah.
And they pushed out a little further. To explain for y'all again and for the public, basically what these are is we've built, we've done three-quarters of the financing through Build America bonds, and the rest of it, we're gonna do through some Department of Energy bonds, and they're guaranteed by the federal government, so that brings the interest rate much lower. The deal is, we have to get this done quickly, once the feds say, okay, we're, and MEAC agrees, and this is the number. There's gonna be a timeframe where every city has to amend the contract we have on plant vocal. Now, what we're asking y'all to do tonight is to give the mayor the authority to sign that amendment, once that amendment is here, and the attorneys have taken a look at it and approved it. Basically, we're gonna say, Mayor, I think it's what, one and a half to two and a half percent?
Yeah, it's cheap money, and it's got to be a quick turnaround, and all the cities that's involved in vocal project has to approve this amendment here before it connects to the financing, connects to the big complaint.
And just to give you an example of, you understand what it helps you when you refinance your house and bring down a couple of percentages? We're refinancing a $42 billion power plant, or our $2 billion power station, and we're bringing that interest rate down a couple of percent, so it's really gonna impact everybody involved very positively. So what I'm requesting y'all to do is to approve this, approve the mayor... So what I'm requesting y'all to do is to approve this, approve the mayor, sign the amendment once our attorneys have received the amendment and approved the amendment.
So you're asking us to authorize the mayor to sign something to save us a lot of money?
Yes, sir.
That's pretty straightforward.
Any other question? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we get the approval for the mayor to sign the amendment so that we can save.
I'm sorry?
And the second, Ms. Bradley. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? We'll recommend that to Council.
Thank you very much.
Downtown street lights?
We'll have a discussion with y'all. The next item on the agenda is part of a tee grant for South Broad. And we're in the process of doing some light work now there, figuring out what, how we're gonna light that project. We've got, we're gonna use the same exact light we used everywhere in town for the past five or six years, which is the Holofane Granville. But, and Mr. Chance, we were having some discussions in his office the other day, and if you've noticed, the downtown lights, the globes were purchased from a company that's no longer in business and they are acrylic and they have turned very yellow. And we have talked about these on numerous occasions. So what I did is I had the Holofane guys, while they were here, come in and look at those lights and come up with a solution to fix that. We've come up with several solutions. I just don't want to have that new project come in and then downtown's lights look all yellow and dingy. And the new project looks real nice and bright and more inviting. So I just want to get y'all's feelings. Y'all, y'all want me to proceed in this and look into replacing those fixtures? You're looking at $1,200 to $1,400 per pole and the city owns 30 some odd poles and the county owns another 20 cents. So it's not a small amount of money to be spent. If it's something y'all, y'all are feeling like y'all, y'all want to see the, me to see this through fruition, I will. I'll go through the process, figure out exactly what it's gonna cost and you can make a decision then. But if not, y'all just think we'll live with these lights now, I won't go down that road. So I just want y'all to think about this. You don't have to give any decision tonight. If y'all think about this over the next week or so, just give me a call and let me know if you want me to take on this project.
Recommendation also too, Brian, was it not to go to a single arm?
Go to a single arm, but we have too much light downtown and there's a big push toward what people are calling dark skies where people that get away from the light can actually see the stars. And I've got some examples after the meeting, you can walk by here and you can see that. The new LED lights are built to put the light where you want the light, not for the light to spill over in somebody else's yard or into the sky. It looks a lot better, but it is a lot of money. So it's just a decision that I think is at y'all's level. If it was me, I would probably, with just the savings in energy, because we're paying for that energy out of the apartment, and the savings in maintenance, I could probably get your RLA down to maybe three years, three and a half years by doing this. We waited enough to where the LED technology is cheap enough. Now, before these fixtures were, instead of 1,200, were 3,000. So we waited long enough for the technology to mature and we've got a cheaper version.
And these are the lights that you're installing on the South Broad?
They match those lights.
Same type?
Same type of lights.
Yes, sir.
Dark sky there too?
Dark sky there too. You'll have a reflector at the top. The Granvilles, I'm sure you've seen them over here on Midland, those are a high pressure sun, not high pressure sun, metal halide, I believe. And they have a reflector at the top to keep the light going on.
Is this part of the project that Kekkenwood designed?
Yes, ma'am. We will be, we will be coming to you next week, I mean, next month to purchase the lights for that tee project. But I just need to know if y'all want me to go further than the tee project and look into replacing the ones downtown?
Yeah, this isn't part of the project. This is the original tee grant from 2000.
It was designed by, I wouldn't golf for that.
I assume this project will be the new technology?
Yes. But the initial intent was to, our first option or what we were looking for was to try to get a new globe. Well, that company doesn't exist, like Brian said, so there's no retrofit. So then we got to looking at the energy we're spending to make sense to go ahead and purchase, not the new pole or anything, but just the LED light and the globe as one unit.
We looked at replacing just the globe itself and having a globe made. That was just getting the glow, a custom globe made was $800 piece. So, and you're still gonna have an incandescent bulb that's eating all kind of energy. So the thought was, let's go do a more energy efficient, half the amount of lights and a more efficient light and you cut your energy uses about, you know, by two-thirds.
So there will be a payback on this in three to five years? We're just not going out and spending this money and that's what it is?
No, no, no.
You're gonna recoup this money?
Right now, Mayor, you're spending around $125,000 to $150,000 to light the streets.
I just wanted to make that, understand that is we're just not spending this money.
Right.
We're gonna recoup it back.
Energy savings and maintenance costs.
Yeah. And I would, I would like to see you continue to look at it and come back to us though with that RLA plan that Mayor's talking about. How long would it take us to build?
That's what I need.
Do you feel like you've explored every option for retrofitting the lights that we have?
Yes, sir. I've wrestled with those lights for the past two years. We had a glass globe that we thought was gonna work. We had it, manufacturer brought us one and we put it in and it set up there and then it fell out and we had to catch it. It's just not, we just safely wouldn't stay in the groove. And I've tried four different ones to try to fit in that, in that spot. Just the way the grooves are built in there, there's nobody that makes a light that fits that hole. That manufacturer went out of business shortly after that project was done.
What about a complete retrofit of the fixture?
That is something that I will look at if, now that y'all said that you want me to look further into this, I'll actually look at, will it be cheaper to replace that old pole and everything with a Granville? Have a single apron head, like instead of a teardrop. That actually might help your tree situation too, with the situation with all the trees growing up through there, you're getting into the lights and the Granville will settle a little lower. That's one of the options that we've looked at, is replacing the whole thing. And that might be the cheaper solution.
So you're gonna look at that then some more?
Yes, sir.
South Broad Street Electrical, quick.
Yes, sir. South Broad Street tee project is moving forward and we've got to order our material to build that project. If you remember, we're doing away with all the poles on the east side of the road and we're going to joint use with Windstream on the west side of the road. We're going to build a spacer cable project to get the wire up as high as possible and have a lot of view to make the project look as good as possible. In the little alley over here behind Sanders, we have a spacer cable project and behind Quality Foods, we have a spacer cable project. Two things spacer cable does for you, it gets the wire out of the way, it helps with the liability, and it stops you from having to do a lot of tree trimming, which saves money down the road. The cost for that material minus poles is $19,365. The poles will come out of our yearly pole replacement program. Those most of the poles that we're replacing are, they're outdated, you ain't changing anyway. That's just for the wire, material, and all the spacers is $19,365. It will come out of our capital improvement and we've got $150,000 budgeted for reconducting. This will be a reconductor, we'll be changing from copper to aluminum. And it'll just look a lot better, be a lot more lively.
Why, and it's paid out of the tee grant?
Because we, this will be part of our matching funds. We'll use this as part of our matching funds. The wire already needs replacing. So if you're doing it this way, it makes the tee grant work because this will be a big enough amount of money to go toward the matching funds.
Dollar for dollar match? That's.
The match is like for? Two to four, but basically we're getting a million, it's two combined projects, so we're getting over a million dollars anyway. I mean, that's just the required.
Our labor and this will be part of the match. And then the lights will be part of the match and then me installing the lights will be part of the match.
Yes, we're gonna capitalize all the labor, all the material.
So you needed a motion or you're requesting that we, the committee, take action on the purchase of those materials and they were 19? Is there a motion to?
I'll make that motion at 19,365, recommend it to the Council.
Motion by Mr. Bradley, is there a second?
Second.
Second, by Ms. Dixon. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? We'll recommend that to Council. Okay, Mr. Thompson.
Spring Street Substation, Substation 2. Y'all will remember back several years ago, we sold that station to MEAC. MEAC maintains, that station, they actually did a million dollar upgrade to it years ago. At the time, we said, MEAC, right, and they're, no, we want to, that's fine. Now, the FERC regulations have changed a little bit. MEAC is required to have a permanent easement into that location. While they're doing that, we did the surveys for the easement, found out they built a building about two feet over the line of the land we gave them in the initial deed change. So what they're asking for us to do is to approve the easement and the substation deed to include the complete building and the fence and to give them an easement in. What I'm asking you to do is approve this after our attorney's approval. I'll have that done before next meeting. And it's, I think it's like $10 they're gonna pay us to make sure this gets done, but it needs to be done. They need it on the first possession. Mayor taking care of the station and saving us about 75 grand a year then maintaining. And I'll take any other questions you may have.
Do we need separate motions for the quick claim deed and easement or is that one motion for both of you?
One motion would suffice.
Then I'll make the motion that we send to the Council approval of the quick claim deed for the short amount of property that's needed and also the remaining of the easement.
Motion by Mr. Bradley, is there a second?
Second.
Second, by Mr. Purvis. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We recommend that to Council. Mr. Thompson?
One of our capital improvement items this year is re-closer for reliability. About a year ago, we placed three re-closers down near Carver School on 83 and they protect the Church Street, Davis Street, Lacy Street area from anything that happens out 83 toward the wastewater plant. And they worked great during the ice storm. The ice storm tore a lot of trees on that line and took out that service to the wastewater plant, but no one in that area saw loss of power. So the second ones we set were over on, behind ALE's house. They protect the Spring Street Hospital circuit. That was the next circuit we protected. And again, they worked great during the ice storm and also during the windstorm, protected that circuit. We also have one north of town that's protecting the, basically the nursing home right there and that section of Green Acres and it's worked great. So what we're doing in our next step, we have $50,000, a little $50,000 in the capital improvement budget to buy more re-closers this year. We got a pretty good deal from the manufacturer and we want to buy nine of the re-closers at a cost of $47,385. Three of these will be set on South Broad to protect the southern part of downtown of those traffic lights. You'll notice during the last two storms we've had, all the traffic lights on the south end of town have been out and the police departments had to come in and direct traffic and these will protect that area. And then we've got the other six are going out in a single phase, just protecting individual communities all around the town. We envision having about 50 of these total, once we get done in our five-year plan. And so there'll be nine more for this year and probably nine more for next year. That will be $47,385 for this year. And I'll take any questions y'all may have or oppose.
Those numbers are not in what we have in our.
You have the total for one complete item, a, let me get this turned up, a PKR switch and a re-closer. And that's for one. And what we're asking for is for the 40, for nine of those.
Okay, but this says three on here.
About the price that we got, but we're asking for nine. And we originally talked to them, we got the price of the group.
Okay, so 5265 each, those two things together?
Right.
Times nine.
What'd you come up with the total of?
47,385.
You might get them down this week if you want to, aye, right?
I'm gonna do the best I can.
And that's only three?
Right.
If I was selling, I'd give you.
We did a study with, well, actually we let the WMC and COV MC do the study. And COV MC and Walton MC picked this device, this re-closer device. And the reason they picked this device, like you're picking their brain a little bit, was this device will do 60,000 operations in a lifetime, never have to be maintained. And you think about 60,000, how many years will that get you? Well, the oldest re-closer we had in the system had done 1,400 operations in the 10 years I know it's been hanging out there. So these will outlive every one of us once they're put in the system. The only maintenance you have to do is every eight years, you change the battery. It gave us a lot of information too about what happens at a fault, when a limb falls, you'll know how much amperage goes across and you can take that data and go back and really work on reliability of the system. FERC is really pushing us toward the having this data, you know, what happened, when the outage happened, what happened, how long was it off, all that kind of stuff. And so to stay under their regs and keep them off our back, we've got to start this type of program. We started like a year ago, I think, two years ago doing this.
Without taking too much time, what does it, what does it do?
Re-closer, the re-closer is like a, it's like a breaker in your home.
Okay.
We have a breaker in the substation. The breaker continually looks at that wire going out there. But one breaker in the substation could serve anywhere from, you know, 800 to 1,200 homes. What this does is it works in conjunction with the breaker. It gets further into the system. So let's look at the Pollock subdivision, the ones that are sitting there, right? I talked about the ones on Church Street, it protects everything that's passed there. Well, in Pollock subdivision, when you have a limb fall in Pollock subdivision, it used to go all the way back to the substation, take the hospital out, take all of Spring Street out, take part of Pine Crest out. Now, if something happens in Pollock subdivision, just that, that one phase in Pollock subdivision goes out. So let's say Woodland Avenue has a tree fall and it takes out one phase. Well, all those houses are fed off three phases, so there's a third of the houses on one phase, a third of the houses on the other phase, a third of this one. So if you take one phase out on Woodland, there's a section right there that's just one phase. Well, it takes that out, three quarters of, or two thirds of the houses in that subdivision are still on. All of Pine Crest is still on and all of Spring Street and the hospital are still on. If you look at the ones on 83, where something happens between Carver Middle, which is about the end of our service territory, between there and the wastewater plant, you've got all of Davis Street, all of Lacy Street, all of that back over down Hamlet, all that is protected from anything that happens out in that system. So instead of having a limb falls at the wastewater plant and takes out, you know, the phase, instead of going all the way back to the substation, taking out all of those, you know, 1,200, 1,500 customers, the only thing off is the substation phase, the wastewater plant. So that's what it's been doing, is keeping the system reliable.
I think this replacement, what we discussed last fall, is that right, where you did some relief per year?
Yes, sir.
Replacements for you?
Yeah.
That was the plan that we actually discussed last fall?
Yes.
And this, what you're asking for now is this is portion of that total plan that we discussed last fall?
Yes, sir.
So it is included in this year's CIP budget?
Yes, sir.
And I didn't ask that, didn't you say the South Broad equipment was gonna come out of CIP?
Yes.
That's gonna work into your budget to expenditure?
It's gonna work into the re-conducting part of our budget.
Yeah, it's gonna work into the total budget for CIP for this year?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a motion that we purchase or recommend the purchase of the re-closers?
I'll make a motion that we purchase the re-closers.
Motion by Ms. Dixon, is there a second?
I'm second.
Second, by Ms. Bradley, all those in. All those in favor say aye? Aye, opposed? We will recommend that to council. Thank you, Mayor, I think we're through.
Okay. Uh, public safety.
Thank you, Mayor. We got one item tonight, uh, Chief Glass.
Thank you, Mr. Rich, Richardson. To the Public Safety Committee, I'd sent out a memo and just a, uh, quote and contract from, uh, the TASER company. We, we've been using Axon cameras and their storage, which is called evidence.com, on twelve systems that we've bought, kind of piecemeal and, and done that way over the last ten years. Uh, the system is, uh, it's the best thing out there, uh, for, you know, police officers and, and for the public. A car camera now, it costs four to six thousand dollars per camera. Basically, we can put our officers in, in this camera system that they can use when they exit the vehicle, wherever they at, on call, in a building, for about what we can buy part, uh, five car cameras for. At which at, at the end, at the front of the vehicle, when the officer's gone and video part does. I got Officer Davis with me tonight. You just bear with him about two seconds, he's gonna kind of tell you, uh, the, the use of it and, uh, how convenient it is and, and, uh, really the good usability of the, of the system.
All right, well, good evening, everyone. This is an Axon Flex camera. Um, this is the battery for it, and this is the camera itself. And while I explain it, I will pass this in the room, as I have mine on me. But basically, the battery and the camera sits in the dock station at the police department, and it, it charges the battery and it uploads the data onto evidence.com versus an in-car camera and a patrol car, um, which you, you don't normally download until the, till it's full. You're taken inside a police department, and you have to wait there, sit there, until it downloads. Then your chain of custody come into play, transfer it over to evidence, logging it down, storing videotapes or DVDs. Um, this is very simple, it's easy to use. Uh, it's basically, it's for police officers, built by police officers. It's very rugged, um, you can drop it without it breaking. It's, it's, it's weather resistant, um, snow, weather, no, hot weather, uh, rain. And all you have to do is just pick it up, begin my shift from the dock station. Um, I just clip it on my belt, run a wire from the battery up to the camera itself, and just put it on and I can go. The battery lasts twelve-plus hours during my entire shift. I keep it on during my shift, and when I get ready to use it, all I have to do is double tap it. You hear the beep? Now it's recording. And to stop recording, I just hold it down, and then it stops recording. And before every recording, it goes back thirty seconds to a pre-recording. It does record the audio for the prior thirty seconds, but it records video. So if something is going on in front of me, and I turn my camera on, it's gonna catch whoever ran the red light or whoever swung at someone first during altercation, and it's gonna be on video. So at the end of my shift, all I do is just stay back in the docking station. It begins to upload, and it goes to evidence.com. Uh, also, this way, if the chief got a call for anyone, or a complaint, or he wants to see a video of any traffic stop or any encounters with the citizen, he can go to his computer and just pull up evidence.com and watch my video, rather than waiting for me to come back into work, pulling the tape out of my car, um, and downloading, then, then viewing it, um, on his computer. He can go to it anytime. Um, also, with this system, it comes with an app on your mobile device. I can watch it on my, on my cellphone as well. I can't, once it's downloaded to the system, I can't go back and view it. But long, um, within distance of my, um, Bluetooth phone, I have to pass that around, you can see live view of, of what I'm doing at the time. So if I made a DUI, stopped arrest of someone, or went back through a report, I can go to my cellphone, watch the video, and take down notes and do an instant report. But once it's downloaded, I can't go back and view it on my phone. I have to go to evidence.com, which, which saves on, you know, server buying and maintenance and all of that. It's very simple to use. Uh, also, it's great going inside a residence, um, versus in-car camera. You can't take your camera from your car inside the house. So it also, uh, builds up trust within the police department and the community. Um, so I can go in and see my encounter with the citizen inside of a residence or, you know, two or three store floor, versus the in-car police camera, which you lose is your audio and reception if you get, you know, within fifty or seventy-five feet away from your patrol car. So it's a great tool. Um, a lot of police agencies are going to it. It's very, it's trending very high. And it saves on your, uh, civil and federal lawsuits.
Can, can someone like the chief log in from his office real time?
No, sir.
No, no, but it's, it's recorded every day when you come back?
It's recorded every day, I can't delete anything, I can't alter it, I can't do anything to it.
It records all day?
No, ma'am. It's on all day. It, it don't record unless I record.
It's, it's in a, in a standby. When it come on, when they first turn the system on, it's in a standby. When it does that double tap, when it starts recording, and like you said, it backs up those seconds prior with the audio. At, at some point, probably as this is, is improving and, and the work that they've done on, like the ones that, that we bought over a two-year period, what, what we'll be getting to go across uniform patrol is a newer, updated version. One thing in the contract, at the two-and-a-half-year point, we get all new hardware. Then at the end of the five years, we get all new hardware. So at the end of the five-year deal, uh, what we're looking at is we got brand-new equipment, the latest and the greatest, and the only thing we take care of is the service agreement and the storage with the, with the, after that five-year period.
What if someone assaults the police officer? How would you record that, somebody assaults you?
As far as video goes? I mean, it's great as far as having it, um, it's magnetized, it's, it's a magnet to it, and it clips on and off. I haven't yet to have it come off of my system or my sunglasses. Um, but versus an angle of a police car, just seeing your body, you're actually seeing what the officer seen before an altercation, and, you know, it records audio and the video. So it, it goes great in court, um, and a prosecutor, prosecution can use that very, very well.
Ms. Riley, what the officer would do on the way to the car before he exits his, his, his vehicle, he's, he'll have it on. So when, when he has the, the encounter with, with the citizen, it's already running.
So with every encounter, he's turning it on?
Yes.
So what is the policy of, when you push the policy on turning it on?
Turn it on before you encounter with, with the public. I ever call, turn it on.
That's the ones with twelve that we got. Now, we've had training issues where we had to teach people the second half to turn it on. We have, we had an issue with TASER with some batteries. And when it come down, they, they showed us what, what we weren't doing the way we should've been doing, so that's corrected that. And, uh, folks that, uh, when I've had issues with folks not using their camera, and there's gonna be times, and the policy, it reads when it all possible. There's gonna be times it might not, might not be able to do it. But when, uh, we've, we've had incidents where it wasn't used as it should be used, disciplinary action was taken or correct portrayal. And I appreciate the officer, you know, coming tonight to tell you all that, 'cause, uh, one, we need to hear some, from somebody other than me and Brian tonight, and I thought he'd be- a fresh, fresh person to see, and, uh, uh, he, he does an excellent job for us, and, uh, we, uh, might ha- happy to have him as part of the, of the police department. And, you know, any questions besides and asking the, uh, two-thirds of the initial twenty-five thousand, four hundred dollars that comes from Seize Dance Snaps, I got money in the line of items in the budget to take care of those ten thousand, four hundred dollars.
Have you had to use this in court? Yes. No, sir, I have not. Any other?
We, I've already had to use it, looking at, you know, encounters. And one officer that, uh, the lady was pretty persistent about how he was talking to her, whatever. I mean, it was, this particular incident, it implied sugar coming out of his mouth. It was very right the officer, you know, so it does. And it is, and, you know, it's part of the system as much as it is with the officer.
So that has audio as well as video?
Yes, sir, it does.
And, you know, just, you know, having that on the incident inside, just on search warrant, you're, you know, you collect that, that evidence, and that's, that's what it does, it collects evidence.
I was gonna say, it may end up paying for itself, like you said, for the citizen, not just the officer. Officer's gonna have to do his job and do it right.
Yeah.
'Cause he's being recorded.
Yes, sir. It's, and, and what I'm saying, you know, versus the car camera, and by five car cameras, right, I put everybody in this system for the same dollar. Actually, probably a little less dollars, you know, 'cause, I mean, I got a server down in that. All it does is downloads off thumb drives, off cars, and the, the video, policing has went from video, like VHS, to that become a real nightmare of storing the tapes. Then it went to the CD and that's on a thumb drive, and, and this is, this is where it's at. And the TASER company, unlike the company with the light bulbs, along with, I mean, TASER's gonna be there. If TASER goes, I'll be as, like, everybody else is gonna be gone, too.
Where, where's the, the evidence stored? This is stored online in a cloud somewhere?
Sure, in a cloud.
Yeah, that, that's great. I'm saying currently, though, your car cameras-
We got, we got a, uh, there's two different systems. Ones, uh, some are on, uh, CD, others are, are stored in a server.
Here, at the city?
No, at the PD, not, not up here yet.
No, but at the PD. I mean, I think this is much safer, that we're storing the data and evidence.
Absolutely, I tell you, you're, you're my favorite counsel in the night.
This is-
It is, it really is.
This is the way it's gonna have to go, I mean.
Well, that's the future cost, because we've got some server costs coming up. If we don't do this, it's way-
Well, what happens when you-
My favorite finance lawyer, I'm telling you.
Anyway.
What happens in court, I'm sorry.
I mean, you're not gonna have your evidence destroyed in a fire or a burglary or-
This is techni- technology as advanced as it is right now. And the thing I really like with system one, is there's a known, gets broke, they say, in a new. No matter how it got broken, you know, the officer, he lays it on the back of the car, it falls off, and, uh, I run over, you know, uh, and plus getting an update of hardware at two-four-five or two-and-a-half years, being at the end of that five-year agreement. I just, so I'm, I'm asking your support, and of course, with any kind of agreement with that Mr. Rosenbauer and the attorneys, make sure it's okay, but, uh, that's what I'm asking for.
The manufacturer's Axon, though, not TASER?
TASER is, they belong to TASER.
Oh, okay.
TASER's the-
Parent company.
TASER, TASER's who we're dealing with.
Okay.
This is a sole source purchase.
There, I don't know anybody else that's doing it, Ms. Riley. And, and we, like I said, we've got a twenty-four-month experience with them. Uh, if somebody else is doing it, they're doing it on the curtails of TASER.
Any other discussion?
Uh, my only question, just so I go over these statements that are on here. It's a, it's a basically a five-year commitment contract, right?
Yeah, the hard, all the hardware is purchased in the first year, and the rest of it is the, you know, the annual insurance program.
But it's pretty much laid out the way it is on these pages. First year's, is it twenty-five?
Twenty-five, oh.
Four-hundred fifty-nine, the second year seventeen, the third year seventeen. But it's a commitment for that contract period, right?
Right.
Any other discussion? We entertain a motion.
Make the motion that we recommend the council that we purchase them.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We recommend bringing this to full council next week.
Thank you for your support, and thank you, Officer Davis, for your good presentation.
That's all we have.
Mayor? Okay. Uh, DDA, Ms. Crawford?
Good evening, everybody. Um, we had a good weekend this past weekend as far as events go in downtown. Um, some interesting things to note about it is we tried the, we marketed our antiques. Um, doing Antique Days Weekend, there was a couple of additional shows, and that was a partnership with the Chamber of Commerce. They're doing Antiques Capital of Georgia, promoting that website, and doing rack cards at tourism sites all over Georgia, um, at the visitor centers when you come into the state lines. And so partnering with that and marketing Monroe as the Antiques Capital, it's continuing to bring in more people from other regions, from other counties, even from other states. Um, I know one lady traveled three hours this weekend to come shop the antiques here in Monroe. Um, and all that's great for our future growth, 'cause that builds our case for needing more lodging, needing hotels. So we're excited to see that grow as a tourism attraction, and hopefully, we're all getting out there and shopping up in the weekends, too. Um, there's a big movement and shift to Monroe being a center for that, and so we're real proud of that in downtown. Um, and it enhances all the business environment. We're seeing a lot more growth. And we had one opening with rents moving to a larger location in downtown. They're actually gonna start painting their signs this week that got approved by HBC. So you'll see some exterior changes happening, which is great to see. And their space was open for about a month, and now it has a new contracting business using that as their showroom. Um, and then the new jeweler store is right next to that. One of the things we've put together with, um, Monroe Downtown is a Welcome to Monroe Downtown packet, using some City of Monroe folders and just kind of giving an overview of all the re-